Do as they do. Sign the sheet right there on the lectern. We're gonna get started in one minute. What's going on, Councilman?
Hey, Mayor, how you doing?
He is asleep, but I don't know why.
Yeah.
Good morning. Welcome to the Chester, City of Chester, City Council meeting for today, December 18th, 2024. As always, we open with prayer, followed by the pledge this morning. We have the pleasure of having Pastor A.J. Collier from the Refreshing Presence Ministries here in Chester, PA. Please step to the mic. All rise.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy and your loving kindness. Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today as a diverse community, uniting in our commitment to serve and uplift our city. We ask, Lord, for your guidance and for your wisdom as we deliberate on matters that affect us all. May our discussions be filled with love, be filled with respect, compassion, and understanding, Lord God. Help us to listen to one another. Help us to hear and decipher what we need to know to go forward. Father, as we address the challenges that are before us, may our hearts be open to listen and receive, especially from those who may be marginalized, Lord God. We thank you for the opportunity to serve and to be united as one. Lord, let our future be full of grace, wisdom, and possibilities. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which exists, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's determine who's here. Roll call.
Councilors Gibson-
Present.
Green-
Present.
Davis-
Present.
Mayor Root-
Present.
Can I get a motion to approve minutes from November 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? We did make that one correction, right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And there are no opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. It's time to hear from you. Public comments on agenda items only. Are there anyone who have any public comments? If so, just step right up to the mic.
One item. Bill number 11, ordinance number 10, as part of budgets. Just a question on one of the line items in the budget, which is parking. How do you plan on getting revenue from the park? I see from last year was projected, I don't know what actual was, but projected with 480,000. This year you have it in your budget for 645,000. So just inquiring, how do you plan on getting the revenues from parking? And how was the revenue got from parking?
Mr. Richard Troutman, our Chief Financial Officer, will address that question.
The increase in the parking revenues is consistent with the increase in the parking expenses. So we're in the process of implementing a contract with the parking company, and the exact amounts are being worked out. So we put the same amount of expenses in as revenue. That's where the increase comes from.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm not clear with that. I'm not clear with where is it coming from? Is it coming from you charging the people, feeding the parks, and helping the property? Is it from ticketing people? Is it from touching meters? I guess not.
So any or all of the above are being worked out through the parking study that was completed and from the actual conversations that it's been having. So the specifics aren't precisely known. This is an allowance from the concept that we're in a contract, we're figuring out what the costs are going to be, and the expectation is we're not going to be continuing with expenses if there aren't some commensurate amount of revenues. So it's a placeholder based on a professional estimate, and the exact categories are to be determined. And is that a fair statement?
It is, and I believe that that parking line item on the revenue side is also, and Richie will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, also includes the parking tax for Subaru Park. If there's any events down there, there's a parking tax on that as well, which generates six figures as well.
That clarify that, because I can't see you doing that much in a household, people.
No, no.
Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only? All right, let's move on. You always give opportunity to old business and new business, and I think we're gonna get a lot of things in this old business and new business section before the long readings that you guys are gonna have to endure. So let's see if we can get all of our comments from council out early. Anybody?
Good morning, everyone. So a part of the old business that I wanted to present was a certificate that was presented to myself on behalf in support of the mayor and city council when I visited the historical Eden Cemetery located in Collingdale, Pennsylvania. And what the certificate reads is, the certificate is awarded to the City of Chester, Pennsylvania. The certificate is awarded to the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, for their continued partnership focused on veterans, boots on the ground, and services in Chester, Pennsylvania. Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, specifically the Ro Kai chapter, been signed by the president. The reason I wanted to present this old business is because it shows that the partnership with the City of Chester is doing to support our veterans with, you know, the Hometown Hero Program that I helped initiate and has support with members of council. I talked to Dr. Monica Taylor, who was head of Delaware County County Council, and she's in full support of what we're doing here in the City of Chester and, you know, getting some more resources for our veterans when it comes to housing, food, and different things like that. So I wanted to present this certificate because it's behalf of not just myself, but mayor and this whole city of council for what other municipalities and other parts of the state recognize that what we are trying to do for our people here in Chester. And I think that was significant and needed to be discussed because the historical Eden Cemetery is one of the largest African-American-owned cemeteries in the country. So to see that partnership come all the way out from Collingdale, as well to trickle down from Delaware County Council, is, you know, is very impactful for the City of Chester, and I'd like to see that partnership continue going forward. So I just wanted to, you know, let mayor and council know that on Saturday that we were presented with the certificate and that Delaware County Council is fully supporting the initiatives we're doing here in the City of Chester with our veterans.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's give us a hand.
Good morning. I'd just like to thank everyone who joined us the other day for the 300th anniversary of the courthouse and to all of our partners who helped put that together and continue to tell the history of the City of Chester. And so thank you to Carol Firing and all of the partners and all of the people who came out, mayor, council, state rep, senator, and a number of people from the county. So just thank everyone, and let's continue to tell the history of Chester.
I would like to thank Ms. Rosetta Carter and First Pentecostal Church along with the City of Chester for providing a Chester Christmas on this past Sunday. It was a phenomenal time. Everything was done decently and in order. I appreciate your making sure the children had Christmas. It was a phenomenal time. If you guys could check out the video on YouTube, it's very impactful. And I just wanted to thank you and your church and your pastor for opening up your doors to the children in the City of Chester and surrounding areas. Oh, wait a minute. And I talked to Mr. Vince Chivoni from Caring for Friends on yesterday. We had a meeting about bringing additional resources here for not only our veterans, but our seniors and as well as families. And so on Fridays, they're allowing us to go and pick up food to bring back to our community, to serve our seniors who may not be able to get out to get the food resources. So I'll have about 600 meals on Friday, and on every Tuesday, I'll be going to pick up additional food resources to bring back here to our community.
And just one more thing also, and the mayor mentioned this at the last council meeting, I believe, but if you guys didn't hear or didn't read in the paper about the $7 million that was awarded to the City of Chester through Amtrak to fix up all of the fencing. I remember when the two children was killed down there by the park. During that time, I was vice president of the school board, and I did write a letter to Amtrak in support of getting some fencing and helping with the holes that was down there. And so I'm glad that that was awarded to the City of Chester, and it's much needed, not just down there, but all throughout the city. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, too, and also thank Amtrak for awarding the city. So it's a newspaper article, too, about it, if you guys get a chance to read it.
All right, I've got a few things here. As far as that Amtrak, actually, it's the, yeah, read the press release. I don't remember all the names, but Amtrak was awarded a grant to put the fencing here in the City of Chester. So I just want to make that slight clarification because I also thought it was an Amtrak grant. I think the fencing that you'll see is already erected right across from Iacona Towing, kinda catty corner there. You'll see a new kinda iron fence, so it, I really believe it's not gonna be a cyclone regular type of a fence. It's gonna be something a lot more secure, and it's to go on both sides of the tracks all the way through the city, so that's exciting. $7.7 million of fencing. That's just amazing. So that's that. Councilman Green also mentioned the 300th anniversary of the courthouse. Right before that, there was a 250th anniversary recognition of General Lafayette, who helped General Washington in the Revolutionary War Battle of Brandywine. So if you go right out of our front door, you'll see a new sign in that park across the street that commemorates Lafayette's visit here 50 years after the Battle of the Brandywine. I also want to double down on what Council Lady Gibson said, the Chester Christmas, where we collaborated with First Pentecostal Church. Thanks to Sister Carter here, pastor, the whole church. I thought it was just gonna be a toy giveaway. I'm gonna be serious. Get some candy, watch the kids get their toys, drink a little hot chocolate, but they had a service that was out of this world that led up to that. The program was your traditional Christmas story, which was comprised of, you know, the scriptures of the Christmas story and some phenomenal, phenomenal singing. And then the pastor invited all the children, 18 and under, up to the altar to give them a special prayer, which was so relevant. It was, it just hit the spot, and in so many cases here in our black church in particular, where younger people don't feel included or welcomed. It was a good example of a church that seems to get it right. They can still cater to the older population and still making room for young people to enjoy the service, so we are really proud to have partnered with them. It was a good evening. I want to thank our chaplain, Lisa Dennis, for keeping her promise and getting me, or getting us, someone to do the invocation before every council meeting. I think it was great to have pastors represented from churches all across the area. It helped me get introduced to many of them, and I really liked the variety of prayer that was presented. So I hope you guys enjoyed it, too. We're gonna continue that next year unless you say otherwise. If you don't know, pretty much all of last week, the Central Business District was shut down due to a water main break, and unfortunately, the water that escaped the water pipes got into the gas mains. So if you were inconvenienced by blocked streets and PICO trucks and Chester Water Authority trucks, it was because it took them literally from Tuesday to Sunday to remedy that situation. I just want to thank those guys, PICO, Chester Water Authority, our own fire commissioner for being the emergency manager on hand at the command center there. It was a big job. They figured it out. Good for them. It was, you'd never want water in your gas main because what happens, that water just drowns out the pilots, so you can't have heat, you can't cook, and your hot water heater, or don't call it a hot water heater because it heats cold water. The water heater goes out as well. So they provided space heaters for the residents who live in this area, and they had a command center in place so people could get updates. They had blankets, they had everything, so. Thank you, PICO. Thank you, Chester Water Authority. Thank you, J.P. Shirley. And thank you for the patience of the, of those of you affected in the Central Business District and those of you who had to do detours to get all around. Oh, yeah. Was it Friday? What night did we do the parade? Friday night? Friday night. Oh, my God, that was, that was amazing. It was the first time I've been in the parade that the fire department, first responders, a few police officers, mayor, council, many of us were involved, just touring the city at night with the blaring sirens and, I know my car, the windows were down. We were blasting Christmas music in my vehicle, giving out teddy bears and candy canes to anybody who came out. The kids were excited. They were jumping up and down, happy to see Santa Claus. This year, Santa did not ride on the fire truck. He literally rode in the fire boat. So the boat was attached to a trailer, and it was exciting. It was really exciting to be out there. To see the faces of the kids literally jumping up and down when they saw Santa was a good thing. So thank you, Fire Department, Police Department, council, and those of you who came out and enjoyed that. I also got a few notices that just came through regarding, oh, where'd they go? Hold on one second, please. Here we go. There are board position vacancies in Delaware County Government, so the Jail Oversight Board has vacancies. The Delaware County Commission for Immigrant Affairs and the Delaware County Veterans Advisory Council has 15 vacancies. Immigrant Affairs has four vacancies, and the Jail Oversight Board just has vacancies. I don't have the website on hand, but on the county website, you know, you can apply there. Basically, it's just a letter that goes to the county clerk to express your interest, and they all say apply by Friday. They don't have much time for that.
One last thing. One last thing. I would be, oh, you know. I would be remiss if I did not personally thank Commissioner Shirley for allowing me to ride on the boat with Santa on Friday. I want to let you know it was extremely cold out there, but I had an amazing time. For those who don't know, I also serve as a special education teacher here in our charter school. So to see some of my students outside receiving candy, teddy bears, and just the excitement that I seen on their face, like I said, like the mayor said, for the first time in Chester's history, we had that parade was really exciting for me, despite how cold it was. So I did want to mention, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. I enjoy myself. God willing, I will participate in that every year in riding with Santa, even though it is cold and I'm not a cold person, but I had a great time, and I just wanted to personally say thank you so much.
I don't know if there's any photos, but the most decorated car in the parade, the award goes to Justin Tibbles. He literally ripped his Christmas decorations out of the house and had them on the roof of his car. He had lights inside the car, Christmas lights. I didn't even know you could plug those things in in a car, but he found a way to do it. That was, that was pretty amazing. I guess I'm gonna also break a little protocol and do an award right now. We usually save this to the end, but I'm gonna do it now. Those of you who are longtime Chester people know that San Rose Trophy went out of business, I think, late last year, and we missed San Rose Trophy. So we had to figure out where we're gonna get our awards from, and we were testing out a couple places. And I got a plaque made just to see how it would behave, or how it would look, how they would behave, the business, and it came out all right. But it was sitting on my shelf in my office, and I was like, this thing expires at the end of the year because it does have the date 2024 on it. And I said, I just, I gotta give this away to somebody for some reason. So this is, this is me presenting this award to a person who shows up to many, if not all, of our council meetings, always has some great insights. He has his own issues, as we all do, when we come here. I see he and his wife here often, but I also see them out in the community. Just about every community meeting, they're present as well. He's somebody that I lean on to get community information. He is here today. I'm gonna present this to Mr. Crawford. Come on up here, sir. You and your wife. Come on up here. You can just stand over here, because I gotta be on the mic, but it reads, Chester City has our logo. It's the Sea Pride Award 2024 for outstanding contributions and service to the City of Chester, Pennsylvania. We lost one. What happened?
He'll be back.
We can't start without him because we're gonna start going through the ordinances and resolutions, and his vote is important. You have a call on a few more. Here he is. Yeah. I knew it wasn't long. So this is, for many of these that we're about to go through, it's a second reading. Unfortunately, they have to be read again. So I just ask for your patience and attendance. It's gonna be, it's gonna be long. Madam Clerk?
Bill number 11, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 10 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the municipal government herein after set forth during the 2025 calendar year. The council of the City of Chester does ordain Section 1 that for the expenditures and expenses of the 2025 calendar year, the following amounts are hereby appropriated from the fund equities, revenues, and other financing sources available for the 2025 calendar year for the specific purposes herein set forth. Section 2, the general fund budget for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $62,749,420 and appropriated from the following revenues as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Real estate and library taxes, $9,917,000. Taxes at 511, $25,849,000. Fees, fines, licenses, and permits, $3,438,620. Interest, rents, and royalties, $400,000. Intergovernmental revenues, $3,450,000. Reimbursements, $100,000. Other revenue, $2,628,800. And host fees, $16,266,000, with a total of $62,749,420. Section 3, the general fund budget for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $62,749,420 before unpaid pensions and appropriated to the following departments as more fully detailed in the attached Exhibit A. Department of Public Affairs, $5,373,248. Department of Public Safety, $15,062,359. Department of Community and Economic Development, $2,068,690. Department of Public Works, $2,115,216. Department of Parks, Public Property and Recreation, $1,813,052. Departments of Administrative Support, $5,688,214. Operating transfers, $867,000. Loan payments, $2,200,000. Total before unpaid pensions, $62,749,420. Prior year's unpaid pensions, $43,200,000. Total general fund expense is $105,942,420. Section 4, the state liquid fuels tax fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $1,142,722 with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 5, the rubbish fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $3,435,880 with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 6, the debt service fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $0 with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 7, the ARPA fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $9,113,497 with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in Exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 8, the capital improvement fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $4,663,900. $4,663,902, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 9, the rental inspection fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $625,000, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. Section 10, the special events fund for the 2025 calendar year is hereby set at $65,000, with detailed appropriation described in greater detail in exhibit A, City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, 2025 budget. And section 11, that any ordinances conflicting with this ordinance be and the same is hereby repealed insofar as the same affects this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. The first time the ordinance was read, I didn't vote on it, or should I say, I voted against it. And that was because I didn't have enough information or knowledge on the budget. And as I stated before, I'll never vote on anything that I don't, I'm not educated on, or don't have the correct information. I believe that us as council, we have a duty and an obligation to make sure that whatever we vote on is in the best interest of the residents and of our constituents that we serve. And so over the last couple weeks, I've had an opportunity to meet with the CFO and the chief of staff to go over this budget in great detail, line item by line item. We've had a chance to make some negotiations, take some things out, add some things. And so now therefore, I am confident and I'm willing to vote on this budget after a careful review. And I've had a chance to, as I said, go over the budget item by item. So I do want to thank the chief of staff and the CFO and all the department heads who worked on this budget. I truly do appreciate your hard work and dedication to the city. And I am now ready to vote on it. Thank you.
I'll make a comment, pretty much piggybacks on the councilman here. For many of us, it's our first time going through budget season, and we learned a lot. Can't help but to thank the people that he thanked, but I also have to include the receivers team, our finance team, our chief of staff, all the department heads, and all the employees within the departments who fed into the department heads' input to the budget. Now that we have been through this budget season as council, we know how it works and we can insert ourselves at any time that we want. It's a couple-month process. It's a grind. It really is a grind. So it was a lot to get to this point, but I'm really proud at the budget that we put together. I think it's one of the best that we've ever done as a city, at least in the time that I've been here. And I'll have some further comments on the budget a little later, but I think it's time to vote. Lady Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 12, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 11 of, I hope I said bill number 12, my apologies. Ordinance number 11 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, prescribing a number, duties, and compensation of the employees of the City of Chester for the year 2025, directing payment on an annual basis, prescribing the method and times of payment, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 13, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 12 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting, without substantial change, the business privilege tax for the year 2025, as set forth in Article 307 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon persons, firms, companies, and corporations engaging in certain business within the City of Chester, except for the amendment to subsection 307.02A, entitled, Rate and Basis of Tax, of Section 307.02, entitled Tax for General Revenue Purposes of Said Business Privilege Tax, to set the said rate of tax to 2.0 mills for retail and 3.0 mills for wholesale, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 14, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 13 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting the earned income tax for the year 2025, as set forth in Article 303 of the Codified Ordinances of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, without substantial change, except for an amendment to Section 303.02, entitled Imposition of Tax, to impose a tax of 2% for 2025 for general revenue purposes on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by non-residents of the City of Chester for work done or services performed or rendered in the City of Chester, and to establish the earned income tax rate at 3.75% for 2025 on salaries, wages, commissions, net profits, and other compensation earned by residents of the City of Chester, with 1% of the residents and non-residents earned income tax collections being designated to distress pension payments and providing for the administration and enforcement of the ordinance, and imposing penalties for violation thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? I'll just make the comment that we are all looking forward to that 1% to go away as soon as we get through our receivership bankruptcy proceedings. So that's a tax reduction that we're looking forward to in the near future. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 15, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 14 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the authority granted by the Home Rule Charter, reenacting, without substantial change, for the year 2025, the local services tax, as set forth in Article 305 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended in its entirety, which imposes a tax for general revenue purposes upon the privilege of engaging in occupation within the corporate limits of the City of Chester at the rate of $52 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 16, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 15 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting the tax rate for the year 2025 on all real property at 9.4041 mills, and fixing the library tax at .4017 mills.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 17, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 16 of 2024, an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending subsection 925.021, entitled Fees of Article 925, entitled Refuse Collection, of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, 1978, as supplemented and amended by increasing the fee for the collection and disposal of ashes, garbage, rubbish, and refuse to $350 for subparts A1 and A2, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Bill number 19, first reading was on November 27th, 2024. Ordinance number 17 of 2024, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number 6 of 2024, entitled 2024 Budget, Providing for Compensation Adjustments, Corrections, Modifications, and Changes in Organizational Alignments for Use During the 2024 Calendar Year, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number 1, Soraya Gary, 1010 West 8th Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Number 2, Muriel Mohammed, 928 East 20th Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Number 3, Jean Strand, 909 Lincoln Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Number 4, Robert Kwai Swen, 207 West 23rd Street, Chester, PA, 1903. And number 5, Michelle Johnson, 2516 West 4th Street, Chester, PA, 1903. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 1,000 block of West 8th Street, in the 900 block of East 20th Street, in the 900 block of Lincoln Street, in the 200 block of West 23rd Street, and in the 2,500 block of West 4th Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? I'll just have a sure comment. Every now and then, we need to be reminded what these handicap parking zones represent, and it's for, in this case, five individuals to have a designated parking spot, usually right in front of their house. Out of respect for these individuals who do have handicap parking zones, they pay for them, they absolutely need them, please don't park in their spots. However, law does allow for anyone with handicap placards or designation to be able to park in those spots for a limited amount of time. As you can see, just about every council meeting, we're approving handicap parking zones for individuals. So all across the city, they're, they're, they're just increasing. So number 1, respect those who have these parking designated zones. That's a spot that they've gone through a process to get. But remember, those of you who do have these zones, they're, they're not yours. It's not, you know, your parking spot. It's for handicap parking. So people other than yourself can park there for a short period of time. Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. Just one question to your point. We do approve handicap parking at just about every council meeting. So I can imagine we got hundreds of handicap spots all over the city, and it seems like they're increasing. Does this ever decrease? Is there ever a point in time where we take up a handicap parking spot? Or if that person move, or another person pass away, or anything? Do we take the handicap parking spots up? Mr. Chandra? Yes?
If somebody passes away. I yearly go through our list and bridge out on top and pay your money. You only respond to a lot.
Okay. So the process is if they don't pay their fee every year, then you do an investigation?
Yes.
And then, okay.
It has to be about 100 per year when you go through all of them.
You guys pull up 100 per year? Wow. Okay. Thank you.
Those of you at home who may not have heard the response, these handicap spots are monitored annually going around. First of all, they have to be renewed every year. There's a fee associated with that. So if the fee isn't paid, the handicap spot is taking, taken away. That would include the sign that may be placed in front of your house. And if there's some markings on the sidewalk, they get painted over. When we're notified that people are deceased, they're taken down immediately. Obviously, if the person that's deceased probably isn't gonna pay their fee the following year, so that kind of works together. And individuals do move occasionally. So once we're notified that they move, they're taken down immediately. Oftentimes, we're not informed when people move, so they wouldn't be paying that fee the following year if they moved for an address they moved from. But the most important thing to answer councilman's question is yes, we do go through that list every year. And it was kind of interesting and surprising to hear that about 100 a year are taken down. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Chester City Council approved Resolution 133 of 2024 on December 11th, 2024, designating Santander Bank, N.A., known as the bank, as a depository for the City of Chester. And whereas, it has been determined that the persons identified on that resolution as designated authorized signers needs to be amended. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby amend Resolution 133 of 2024, selecting Santander Bank, N.A., as a depository for the City of Chester by designating the following persons as authorized signers to act on behalf of the city in accordance with all other conditions of Resolution 133-2024, with no other amendments. Name Richard Troutman, who is the chief financial officer, Eleanor Gosin, our city treasurer, and Joy Taylor, our city comptroller. Father, that it does hereby ratify the proper city officials' notification to the bank.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? For those of you who really keep up with this stuff, we approved this a couple weeks ago, but we were kind of asleep at the wheel because there were two names in addition to the three that you see here that shouldn't have been on the list. So all this is, is a correction to remove those two names. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
I'm losing my voice here. I'm sorry.
You made it to the end. Congratulations. Thank you. So that concludes the...
No, I have one more.
Oh, you do have one more?
I have one more. One more, one more, y'all, one more. Resolution, whereas the county of Delaware, acting through the Delaware County District Attorney's Office, known as the county, desires to assist the City of Chester with a lighting initiative. initiative. And whereas, the County has agreed to be the recipient of funding in the amount of two million dollars from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, known as the PCCD, Violence Intervention and Prevention, known as VIP, grant program for the original grant term, February first, twenty twenty-two, through February first, twenty twenty-four, and subsequently extended to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas, the County and the City believe it to be in their best interests to utilize a portion of the PCCD VIP grant funding to support the City of Chester. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the execution of a memorandum of understanding, known as an MOU, between the City of Chester and the County of Delaware to utilize the PCCD VIP grant program funds for the installation of lighting in or adjacent to Four Seasons Park in the City of Chester. Further, the County shall, at its sole discretion, reimburse the City for the installation of lighting in or adjacent to the Four Seasons Park located at Pennell Street and Woodrow Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I will comment again. The County has been super generous to the City this year with funds that have improved playgrounds, created a, well, not created, but upgraded a pocket park that we learned about earlier this month. And this is money going to, I should ask for a show of hands, where's Four Seasons Park? Does anybody know Four Seasons Park or playground? Of course you don't know. I didn't know whether any of these parks were named when I was on Parks and Rec. But it's the playground and used to be basketball courts right at Seventh and Lamoken in the back of the homes, or down the hill from the Dorian Court Apartments. It's dark back there right now. So the County recognized that, they kind of took our lead. So these lights are gonna be on that little walkway that would have normally been where you come up the stairway at the link, Lamoken Street Train Station Stop. So we don't have that stop anymore. But those of you who remember the Lamoken Street Train Station, Septa Station, you would walk up those steps and go across the bridge, or walk up the steps and take that little path that would lead you to Seventh Street. It's overgrown with bushes, it's probably a couple hundred yards. So it's that stretch that's gonna be lit for safety reasons. And if I were to tell a personal story, I literally got shot there coming off of Lamoken Street train when I was in my mid twenties. So that was a scary moment. And it was broad daylight then, but it was the overgrown bushes that gave cover to the bad guys. With a gun, a real gun. Wanna see the wound? Nah, I was really lucky that it was just a, what do they call it, brush wound?
A grave.
Grave, that's it. Yeah, but it was scary. It was scary, so. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Thank you, good job.
You're welcome.
All right, let's keep it moving, it's your turn, it's...
Madam Clerk? I believe we have somebody else.
All right. Before we get started with public comment, I have a little comment to make. We actually have slides, so just look overhead, we've got a couple of slides. I really don't take lightly, none of us up here take lightly, the work that went into this year's budget. So let's just keep it flipping, I don't want to be long here. What we did with this year's budget is, as our Chief of Staff always likes to say, do more with less. Well, what we, I'm gonna say a couple of years ago, as the receiver was doing their work, they kind of had the year twenty twenty-five circled as the year that Chester would hit its fiscal cliff. Basically, where are, how are we gonna survive twenty twenty-five? Amazingly, through the work, particularly of our Chief Financial Officer, who just has a super sharp pencil, and as Councilman Green calls him, a mathematician, I love that term, a mathematician, he keeps these numbers in his head, he rattles them. We have like seven million less dollars than we had in last year's budget, but with that, with seven million dollars less in this year's budget than last, seven million dollars less in next year's budget than this year, that's what I want to say. I should say the year as like I always tell you to do, right? Okay, I see you pointing at me. In twenty twenty-five's budget than twenty twenty-four, here's what's gonna be done in twenty twenty-five. We're gonna put nearly a million dollars into paving some roads. Give us a hand for that. Little more than a half million dollars is gonna knock down some of this blight, and bridge work, over a quarter million dollars will be put into bridges around the town. What do we have there? Oh, good picture. Who knows what that is? Who has a clue, a hint? Somebody guess.
Public Works.
Oh, it does, okay, well, yeah, cheated. So we're gonna put up a new Public Works building, construction's gonna start in twenty twenty-five, I think it will be completed in twenty twenty-five as well. It will be on the corner of two ninety-one and Lloyd Street on the Riverside. Right now, it's just a lot that you just see cars and trucks stored on. We should have a before and after picture to really let people see the significance. Right now, our Public Works building is kind of where, over there, Dock Street. It was bad for years, and we finally just condemned it. So that's coming up, that's gonna be...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think the construction is aimed to be done in twenty twenty-six.
You see that? I get corrected. The construction will be done in twenty twenty-six. Okay. But we're investing three million dollars in it for the studies, for the engineering, and of course, for the building itself. Trails, parks, that work is continuing. For those of you who don't know, the East Coast Gateway is a trail system that is running from Maine to Florida. So when it's all connected, you'll literally be able to walk from Maine to Florida, or ride your bike. If you don't want to go that far, you can do certain portions of it, but that runs right through the City of Chester. And then we have other trails that are within the City of Chester, most notably in Air Park right now, that is a trail, part of the trail system, that's gonna connect to Crozier Park, and also connect, hopefully using the old bridge that's on Ninth Street that goes into Air Park, kind of getting that fixed, and the trail will go through downtown Chester and connect to two ninety-one. So, vehicles. I know when I started here about three years ago, our Public Works guys were driving vehicles that literally had no floorboards. Am I right? I mean, it was really embarrassing to see the trucks that were out on the street. We're buying vehicles. We've already bought vehicles, I mean, the fleet has been updated, but our Director of Public Works has been like jonesing for a bucket truck, and we're gonna get a bucket truck for him. You're gonna be happy, that's your Christmas present, okay? You're gonna get a bucket truck.
I'll take it for a hundred.
Okay. And then other equipment. All right, let's go, what's next? Responsible budgeting, yeah, there's that number again, seven million dollars less in revenue, and we did it without having to lay off a single person, we're actually adding, I think, up to eight police officers next year, and we didn't raise a single tax. I'm not gonna say anymore to that. Is there another slide? Oh, the thank you slide, yeah. Top of the list, Richard Troutman, who joined us mid-year, just, was it this year? You started this year, right? Yeah, you're the class of twenty twenty-four. Has done not just a fabulous job in his role as CFO, working the numbers, making things work, but the tougher part was getting his finance department on board with his vision. It's hard when you have a new boss. It's even harder when you had a new boss the year before. And he came in and not only kind of corralled the troops to follow his lead, the results of one of the biggest things that we could have asked for him is a balanced budget that really looks good. The whole finance department just bought into him, they love you, they tell me that on the side. What are you doing? Well, yeah, you see department heads up there? All right, they're coming. You know, Thomas Moore, Chief of Staff, who's a number cruncher himself, he's the numbers guy who watches the numbers guys. So it's always a luxury to have that type of brain power on board. The department heads, of course, many of them are class of twenty twenty-four, and they just came in and looked at their departments, have worked. And then us, the council members, we, none of us are budget wonks, we're not accountants or certified public accountants, finance people, but we love to be involved, we don't want to be left out, and when we feel left out, we get mad, and rightly so. I stand by my statement, though, that many of us, this is the first time we've gone through a budget season, and now we know how it works, we know we have to get involved earlier, we know we have to make our wishes known almost a year before, you know, they come up. So we're all learning this together. Who's not listed up there is the receivers team, they kind of are driving the numbers to make sure that we can sustain ourselves for years and years and years beyond where we are right now. So thank you, Mr. Dowery and your team for what you do. So thank you, Justin, for putting these slides together at the last minute, but I did not want this moment to pass. This is a very significant moment for us to have a balanced budget and to be able to do things without having to raise taxes, fire anybody, lay them off, whatever the term you want to use. And it's all legit. And it's done today. So thank you, Council, for voting to pass this. I feel sorry for my pal over there who's also on council in Upper Darby, he has to show up on New Year's Eve to finish their budget process, you poor thing. I guess I can also announce too that because of the way we got this thing done, and we kind of fast-tracked it, the meeting that would have occurred on, the city council meeting that would have occurred, that is scheduled to occur on December twenty-six, will not have to happen now. We've done the work that we needed to do to end the year. So I'm instructing whoever's involved to make sure you get the advertisement out that that meeting's gonna be canceled. Hmm?
Give them the day off.
No, here you go.
They deserve it.
Absolutely. I agree.
All right. All right, thanks. It's your turn, where's that sheet? The public comment?
Mayor, it's right there underneath your gavel.
All right, we got a few here, let's start with Lawrence Thomas. You have three minutes. We prefer comments over questions, but you know, if we can answer them, we will.
First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
And it's good to hear some of the nice things that's happening here in the City of Chester, but there's a stain also. A lot of you've seen me here before, I've been here before about Jake's tree service. And what I'm gonna say is, y'all keep minutes from these, what said Mr. Green last time I was here for the meeting, and I think you stated that y'all had a meeting with him, and unfortunately, I think you said unfortunately that all of the zonings and things was proper. Well, with that being said, that is proper, he was told about what he wasn't supposed to do. He came here to the city, said he put a sidewalk in, he put a sidewalk in, nobody uses that sidewalk, it's next to his business, they take dogs over there. Second of all, he literally knows what he's doing to our neighborhood, he literally knows, he's been told. And he is arrogant to the point of he don't care, is continuing on. This past Saturday, seven o'clock in the morning, everybody's woke because he's making the noise over there. It ain't the decibels, it's the noise. Nice neighborhood, everybody kept the yards cut, in the front, porch is nice, porch front is dry, can't do that no more, because all the dust from his property comes over there. They used to state it, that you don't vote on anything unless you, the residents are the primary concern. Well, residents wasn't told that he was coming.
I didn't vote on that.
We was not told that it was gonna be a tree service there, that we wouldn't be able to sit on our porch, that we'd be breathing in marching dust that he does, and it's been doing that. And the last meeting that I was here, I can't point the person out, but they went right back and told him everything you said in this meeting, every word. He's an arrogant person. He came in, said he guess he gonna do free stuff for the city, put the sidewalk in, but the people on West Fifth Street is paying that price for that. We suffer, we can't sit outside, we can't do nothing, because he's making money, he don't care about us over there, he said we ain't nothing but renters. I even contacted the State Attorney General, they wrote me back, and basically what this letter says, and this is a copy, you can have it, that it's nothing they can do that falls on city council here, none of y'all live over there, I live there, a lot of my neighbors live there, all day, weekends, Sunday mornings, evening time, it's noise, and it's dust on the porches. So it's nice to hear the nice things that's happening for the city, but that's a stain. And it should, it was a mistake even granted to him, let's be honest about it, it was a mistake. Mayor Roots, I don't think he was in office then, but I know some of the city council was, Ms. West, I talked to her, what, last week, two weeks ago, she stated that Jake's has done work on her property, cut the trees back, I don't know if he's done other free work for the city, but we're paying the price for it. And we've been talking about it, I've been talking to this person, Mr. Fitz, I did talk with him and whatnot, he said he had something to the decibels, it ain't about the decibels, it's about the constant noise that we have to put up with sitting in our living room trying to watch TV or...
Your three minutes are up, but you got twenty seconds, go ahead.
And hearing this noise. It's terrible. And like I said, nobody here lives there but us, so we're the ones that gotta deal with it. Y'all can go home at night and sleep, but on Saturdays we wanna sleep in, it's no such thing, it's no such thing, and they're seeing it. I'm seventy-one years old, and this is really sad, this is sad, it's depressing, it's holiday season, and people are depressed, I'm depressed, and the only satisfaction I'm getting is to come here and say that this was on us, it ain't even about Jake, that's about the city doing something about it, we've talked about it.
All right, Mr. Thomas, we got you, your three minutes is up.
My three minutes is up?
Yeah, but you did a great job. I, yes, the city is doing something about it, the Department of Environmental Protection is doing something about it, but that's something about, have a seat. That's something about it, once something gets in place, it's really hard to pull back. It's not impossible.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask one question. Get to the mic, ask your one question. Get to the mic, get to the mic, get to the mic.
The zoning that was approved there, can that be changed? I mean, it was a mistake to let him in there, we should have been informed of what was coming there, we lived there, we should have been told, hey, this guy wants to put a tree service in your neighborhood, how do y'all feel about it? We, nothing was said to us.
Okay, have a seat, I'll answer that for you. To directly answer your question, was it a mistake? I think the question you're really asking, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, was it illegal, was it improper, was it against city zoning and planning? It was not. What is going on in that location is going on in a place that's zoned for anything industrial. Industrial. I know he's gonna come up, but just nod and say yes. Okay, well, our zoning guy's gonna come up. I will say this, if the team that we have in place now was in place when this came up, that thing wouldn't be right across the street from your house. However, oh, and to your other point, the neighbors weren't informed that it was coming. Yeah, and that happens all across town. I can cite one example that's similar, where neighbors weren't informed, but notices were put up, like a little poster, a little official, a little notice that something's coming on the fence across the street. Who's gonna read it? Hardly anybody. What we're doing to correct situations like that is putting together this block captain program. The block captains are not just gonna be responsible for cleaning up neighborhoods, which is their sole purpose, but as importantly, they're gonna be that vehicle that we from here can communicate right to neighborhoods, so that that person can get the word around that something's coming. In the City of Philadelphia, I just use that as an example, there are neighborhood groups that would have been informed that... groups that would have been informed that something like a Jake's service is coming in their neighborhood, and you would have known to show up at that zoning hearing or to, you know, give your public comments. So it's unfortunate that that mechanism isn't in place here in Chester. To get that started is what's going to be the block captain program. I've been down there. I've talked to those people down at Jake's to try to get some temporary relief for you guys, and I was ignored. I'll be quite honest with you. As I was leaving, they fired up the chipper. I had to go right to the car wash. I mean, and and I have it on video. The noise is atrocious, the dust is ridiculous, the location of where they do it is is disrespectful.
Very much.
Yeah, I mean, I I see it. We have, we do, we, when the Department of Environmental Protection was down here taking a tour of some of the hotspots of Chester, it wasn't even on the list of places to see. I made sure they came down there and saw it. It's it's, they have to go through their process, which is ungodly, but we are in constant contact with them. So I'm I'm gonna say you're, the neighborhood's not being ignored at all. We are working from several angles to make that a place that isn't the nuisance that it is in the neighborhood. I'm gonna let Paul take it from here, our Director of Planning, Paul Fritz. He's got stuff in his hand, even. He's ready to go.
And before Paul speak, I just want to make it clear that this council didn't vote on it. I was not a part of that council that voted on this, so. Ms. West was, yes. She was the sole councilperson. None of the four that are here today.
Well, honestly, you know, before it even gets up here, it has to go through planning, it has to go through zoning. It should have been squashed right there. So, Mr. Fritz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I really just wanted to respond directly to Mr. Thomas and actually thank him, because to people like him, he's actually made our zoning enforcement easier, because we're aware of when that chipper or mulching machine is in action. We're actually, we're able to get out there last Friday and measure the mulching.
Thank you.
Measure the decibel level of the mulching machine. So as a result of that, that's one.
Turn it on. Hit the button. Just hold it, hold it down.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, sorry. So as last Friday, as I was saying, we were able to measure the decibel level of that mulching machine.
So the decibel level measures how loud it is.
Exactly. And in zoning, there are certain limits to, the levels of that sound can be any sound, essentially. This is an industrial sound, so it exceeded the limits, and now we're going to make the owner of that property aware of that, Jake's Tree Service. So there is an action to take. They have to follow through with what we're asking, which is to stop the mulching machine in its current location or make an appeal to the zoning hearing board. That will letter a violation or notice, enforcement notice will be distributed this week. So I just, again, I wanted to thank Mr. Thomas. That's one item, that's sound. The dust, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is that that is actually being handled by DEP, who does make regular visits to that site, almost on a biweekly basis. So we're taking a multi-pronged kind of effort in making sure that zoning is adhered to as far as environmental protection goes. I'd be happy to take any other questions related to that.
I have a question. I have a question. So I know that we have noise ordinances. Are they gonna be enforced? Will they be enforced, um, as another form of alerting them that they just can't do whatever they want to do? Can they be fined, and can and will it be enforced?
The annoying ordinance is one of the reasons why we invested in that testing of achieving. So this is our first time we had an opportunity to actually measure the noise. And we found that he exceeded what the requirements are, so we are checking the policy. But this is our first time we have to address it with some tangible facts. So we are addressing the noise ordinance from the state.
So are they gonna have a time limit as to to when they can fix the issue, or can we immediately fine them?
It has to go through a process, and City Solicitor, correct me, but we do give him a 30-day notice that he should stop doing immediately what he's doing, and after that, then it runs through a course of action from the city and and actions regarding fines and et cetera.
That's correct. Including citations.
It's unfortunately, it's a process that gives.
Because it's already been more than 30 days.
True, true. The thing is, now we have a document, which we didn't have before, which is a key part of this process.
Thank you.
And to be clear, he he, I mean, he doesn't have to stop, but he can enclose it, he can put mufflers on it, I mean, there's things he could do to lower the noise. Go ahead. This is Dr. Kristin Motley.
Good morning.
Our.
Representing the Bureau of Health.
She represents the Bureau of Health of Chester.
Good morning. So I did, I also wanted to say thank you for bringing this concern up. I did hear you at the previous meeting, and I went and had a meeting at DEP. I brought this up to them, and they told me that this is being handled by their waste team at the time. I told them this is a health issue. It could be waste, but it's also health, and it's an air quality issue. And so the air quality team said that what they need to do is let it get through waste, and then they will pick it up if it's still a concern. I'm gonna follow up with them, and I'll keep you all posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, just through this conversation, you you see that these processes are long. Government is just, that that's just the way things are. I want to also make one little correction, that Jake Trees does do work for the city of Chester. Jake Trees does good work when they're doing their work. What they're doing in your neighborhood is not good, but we do employ them to take down old trees, pick up limbs, you know, throughout our parks and in the streets when they fall. So they are a good partner in that regard, and they don't do any free work for anybody. We do, uh, we do use them for tree services.
So he's getting compensated, too?
He's getting, I mean, he's a businessman, so, you know, he just chose to set up shop in the city of Chester, which we welcome new businesses. It's not a business that should have been anywhere near houses or a neighborhood, and that's where the fault lies. That's where the fault lies. And we're we're busy correcting it, and you can see from evidence from all angles, from council, from the Department of Health, from zoning, from... Once, once you're in, it's hard to get you out. That's all I'm saying. And that's why planning and zoning is such an important part of, you know, the city and its growth.
This was the city of Chester.
And the other thing that you have to understand is that.
You came really anywhere, but you came to Chester.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it was real easy to come to Chester and set up shop. Remember, Chester's an old city. Chester's a city that that has, that was born on industry. The river loves industry. Much of the zoning that is in place now is zoning that hasn't changed in 50, 60, 70, 80 years. There are literal, literally industrial, industrial-zoned parcels within our cities that are right across the street from residents. It didn't matter back when the shipyard was here. You look at Bolton Anchor, you know, that's a darn foundry, and right across the street are homes. You you just don't do that today. Some of the work that you're going to see in the future from guys like our Director of, uh, Planning, Paul Fritz, who just spoke, is to relook at how zoning is done throughout the city, so that we can, uh, prevent businesses from identifying from our from our maps right now, our zoning maps, that this is an eligible place to put certain businesses. As much as we don't want them there, uh, if they see that there's a spot of land, and it could be right across the street from a house, a church, a school, or whatever, that is zoned industrial, they have every right to go for it. It is the zoning and planning board that has to fight back, that has to say, no, you can't be here. But even easier than that is to change the map, and that's a process that we haven't, that we're starting to implement, is is changing the map. I think the worst of this, uh, this particular incident, I I don't know where you live on that block, but some of the houses that surround Jake Trees are sitting in industrial-zoned property. That that shouldn't be. That shouldn't be. But thank you for representing yourself and your neighbors there. Uh, I'm well aware of that, and that cement place that's behind you, that kicks up dust as well, so.
I have I have a question, um, relating to Jake's Tree Service, and you said that they do business here in the city of Chester. How did they get selected to do the work here in the city? Was there a bid process for that? How, like, how did they get selected? Was it an RFP?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, it's my understanding that we haven't used Jake's Tree Service in at least the last year.
We have not?
Have not.
Okay. I just couldn't see that they would be.
It could be longer than that.
Providing services here, but then causing chaos in our community.
Are we using more?
Patricia Dunbar. Patricia, hey, there you are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to beg. I'm finally getting my upper work done. It has been two weeks. I am waiting for an inspector of the city to come and inspect the openings over my dining table of the plumbing that the contractor has done. Without that inspector to not arrive at my house, that cannot be closed, and the holidays are coming. It's right over my dining table. My grandkids have to eat there, and debris is falling down. So I am begging someone to get a city inspector to come. It's been two weeks now, and the holiday is.
Next week.
Next week. And I don't want them to eat dirt. I don't want to eat dirt. So that's all I'm here for. I am begging for a city inspector to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman West may be aware of the situation yesterday. She reached out to us. We reached out to Nikki, who's the Director of License and Inspections. The third-party contractor was notified, apparently, on Friday, this previous Friday, and Nikki's gonna check to see what the schedule is to get them out there, to get that inspection done, so that it could be sealed back up.
Before the holidays.
Soon as I get word, you'll get word.
Thank you.
And you have her contact to follow up with her?
I mean, I don't want to sit up here with unrealistic expectations for you, Ms. Dunbar. We can go out and do the inspection, but we're not the ones who are going to seal your roof.
If I close that ceiling up, there is no way I'm gonna let that contractor be in here. That would be mean and ridiculous. If you close it up, because debris is coming down on the table, wait, suppose you set your.
Hold on one second. Are you expecting the city of Chester to close up your ceiling?
No, no, no.
No, okay.
The contractor is waiting on the inspector. He cannot close that ceiling.
Ah, I see what we're saying.
Before that. But if I tell him to close it, I'm not gonna make him open it again. No, that would be wrong.
Understood. Understood. S.J. Dennis.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor and Council, and also city residents. I have quite a few things here, and my first thing is, we rejected the animal control process or people. I was wondering, do we have an alternative? What are we doing with that? That's one. Number two, we got rid of the parking authority the first time, we got rid of the parking authority the second time, and I don't know why, and we're looking for a third-time contractor. So what are we looking for? My next is DeShawn has the RFP or the RFQ or whatever going out, and if so, when is that due back? I'm just hoping these things are for 2025. And my favorite is the weigh station. When are we gonna do something about that? Now we have some new police officers, and I'm hoping that maybe we can get the weigh station open, even if it's just for part-time or every other day or something, so that we can get some of this big money that could be coming in here for the weigh station. Thank you so very much. I've been talking about the weigh station forever. So hopefully, in 2025, we will get it open. Thank you.
Very good. All important points, and the weigh station, if you want to speak on it real quickly, it it did have to do with manpower to staff. So we're gonna have the Commissioner speak on that?
Uh, correct. So the weigh station was out of compliance, which, uh, last year, we did get it up to compliance. We did have a training session along with new officers who are certified, so it's called MSAP training. There's the weights and measures portion, and there's an inspection portion. Again, is the Patrol Division supersedes everything. The Patrol Division is the meats and potatoes, the backbone. These are the officers out here that are responding to domestic shootings, homicides, rape. I can't have a less Patrol Division and have officers out there worried about tractor-trails. I gotta protect the citizens first. But once my manpower numbers get up, that is big on my list to get done, because not just with weights and measures, it's a traffic detail. So when I hear the community speak, saying, hey, what about the cars that are going past Chester High School at a high rate of speed? What about Blessed Catherine Drexel during the days? The complaints that I that I receive? I can quarterback that and then also address that with my weights and measures slash traffic unit. It's hot on my list. Believe me, I hear the complaints. I feel for the residents, but it will get addressed once my numbers get up. And from the officers that we hired, the four, the the four that you saw when we did the whole presentation, they have to go to the police academy. They start January 13th, they'll graduate in July, and then there's field training. So when you look at the number, them four won't be ready till October of next year. But I've already worked with HR. I sent them a wish list of when we're going to be posting and testing, so you should see something early February, and we'll be testing in March for our class of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know what a weigh station is, it's a big scale that weighs trucks, but it takes pulling over the trucks and having somebody at that weigh station that's certified to determine whether the loads that they're bringing in are heavier than what they have on their paperwork. We don't want heavy trucks going through our streets, tearing up our streets. The weigh station, the weigh station itself has been updated and and certified, so that it works. We just need somebody to work it. If anybody wants to see the weigh station, it's located right across the street from Stacchi's Labor's Local 413 on the other side of Third Street. It's still in good shape. The DeShawn RFP, that's gonna be put out by the county. The county is talking to us and CETA about what's gonna be included in that DeShawn RFP. So it's, it most likely is going to expand from the last RFP that they put out, that nobody picked up the package, nobody wanted to bid on it. That was about 18 months ago. So they're gonna go out again, try again. It's gonna include not just the property that is considered the DeShawn property, but also the county-owned lot that's across the street that used to be Law, Lawhead, Pontiac, or Luxury Limousine. Did I say that right? Luxury Limousine, those couple lots. And then most probably also, i- if you're coming off of the highway, going northbound on Edgemont Avenue, that long ramp that leads to Edgemont Avenue to the right, there's a single home that stands there, that's city-owned property there, too. So the RFP will more than likely include the DeShawn property plus those other plots of land. We're waiting to. We really want to see that done. What was rejected with regard to animal control was a study that was, it's a cost 113 thousand?
Hundred and sixty.
Over $100,000 just to study. We don't need to study.
Hundred and sixteen thousand.
Sixteen?
A hundred and sixteen.
Whatever you said. It's over $100,000. So that's what's... But we will, we will tell you what we're doing.
Also to speak on the animal control, I'm in the chief of police association. The chief of Yaden is probably going to kill me if he hears me say his name wrong. I believe it's Chief Jer Mikkels. He asked me to send him data, and he asked all the chiefs in the surrounding area. And we're supposed to be doing a presentation together and sending it to county council to see if they can assist with us between Yaden, I think it was Sharon Hill, Darby, Upper Darby, and the city of Chester. We're coming together to do a presentation to county council, and hopefully we get this to the finish line.
Yeah, there's not a lot of places that take dogs if they're captured. And we don't want to be a, we don't want to create a kennel here in the city of Chester. And if we did, it would be, you know, that we'd have to put some money to that. And whose neighborhood wants to have a bunch of barking dogs near them? So those are some issues. But we do have individuals around the city who we're looking forward to working with to help us with animal control, particularly dogs and cats. It's a work in progress. We'll keep you updated. Keep asking the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Parking authority, I'm going to have my chief of staff kind of respond to that because there always is confusion between what is a parking management company? What is a parking authority? What's the role of each and what the status is right now?
The existing contract that the city has with Premium Parking, basically, Premium Parking is doing a lot of the services that traditionally a parking authority would manage. So we're really eliminating one of the, one of the barriers, one of the layers between us and the parking company. So they're managing all of the aspects of parking management. The study, just, we got just a draft of it this week. Council will be reviewing that. We'll also be putting that on the website within the next several weeks so that we can make it available for public comment. So any recommendations that come from that, which will require some changes to some ordinances, for example, that reference the Chester Parking Authority, will reference the parking management entity that we have now. There may be some recommendations with respect to fees and schedules. We'll be looking at those as well as part of any changes to ordinances. So the Parking Authority was really what I would consider a paper authority. Didn't have staff. It didn't have revenue. It didn't have employees. Didn't have insurance on properties that it owned. So it was more of a liability that wasn't really in effect in doing anything. So this is to kind of streamline the process.
And also, just to mention that the Parking Authority, the reason the city council dissolved is because they hadn't met for a number, for a while. And then we tried to revamp the board, and we appointed new people to the board. And it was attempts to try to get the board together and to start a regular schedule. And to my knowledge, they still couldn't come together. And so we thought it was best to just dissolve the authority.
All right, thank you. No, thank you. Good questions. J.C., I'm not even going to try to pronounce your last name, but you can when you get up here.
You should know this by now. It's Malakella.
I should, but I don't. I don't want to mess it up. I mess up names a lot.
All right, so good morning, mayor and council.
Is the mic on?
Morning.
Hello?
Okay.
I got to get closer.
Okay.
You might have hit the button.
Anyway, I can project. So I am here today to give you guys some end-of-year numbers. A lot of it has to do, it doesn't have as much to do with, I guess, what you would consider animal control, what you guys are used to me doing, aside from pet retention, which kind of factors into animal control. If we work on pet retention, we have less people letting their dogs go. We have less cats that are running up to two miles to try to mate because they're now fixed, which is also taking the time off of the Streets Department, who is being dispatched out multiple times a week to come pick up deceased animals from the roadway. But I just wanted to more or less kind of give you guys some numbers throughout the year, for the year of 2024. A hundred and thirty-three house cats have been fixed through the Fido Van partnership that we have with Providence Animal Center, over six Chester-location clinics. Those surgeries roughly run about $90 each, and that's for a total of $12,000 for the citizens from the city of Chester. Forgotten cats over in Trainer, they are currently at 485 TNR surgeries for the year, which is the stray cats that we see out in the street. Projected to be over 500 surgeries completed for the year of 2024. At $90 apiece is almost $45,000. Seventy-six resident house cats fixed through their pet program, $6,840. And then so a rough estimate for the total for forgotten cats is $52,000 that they've been able to save the residents. We have done, through myself and Providence, we have held one vaccine clinic and three vaccine and microchip clinics. The microchip clinics was actually the first time in Providence's history that we brought microchips to a mobile clinic, which was here in Chester. There were, over those four clinics, there were roughly 150 pets done, packaged valued around $250, which saves our residents $37,500 over the year for 2024. And plus, over 1,000 pounds of dog and cat food had been distributed directly to residents. Spay, neuter, and vaccine vouchers for off-site at Providence, which I have had the liberty to be able to hand out to residents. The exact number was unknown, but we've definitely handed out over 100 directly to Chester residents totaling over $30,000 in vouchers. So totally altogether, it brings the total to $131,500 in pet retention services for the city of Chester, for the residents of the city, which I think is awesome. We want to keep doing that through the year, through the years to come. Our aim is, we want to be able to hold at least two, we want to hold a clinic every two months, if we can, because Chester has been one of those places that has been deemed that we need the help the most here.
J.C., wrap it up.
Oh, okay. I guess the only other thing that I had outside of that is that I have 15 to 20 families that are still in need of Christmas trees. So if anybody would like to help out, please let me know. I'll get off the animal control stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just throw in some personal notes, like J.C. is amazing with animals. We had her on board shortly to be our animal control officer, and that resolution was rescinded for reasons that had nothing to do with her, but more along the lines of, what do you do with these, what do you do with these animals? You kind of, kind of put the cart before the horse. I have to thank you personally, because this occurred in this year. Our Public Works guys were going out to just pick up some bulk trash, some dumping that had occurred. And they discovered that there was a dog in the mix of the trash. And they tried to shoo it away, and they circled it back the next day and the next day. And they said, we just can't take this because this dog won't leave. And I said, who can I call to at least look into this? So guess who I called? Okay, so now you know who I called. So she goes out there and she reports back that, well, just from the photo that was taken. She says what it looks like is household debris, that this dog is literally right in the middle of. And you couldn't even see the dog from the photo. You really had to expand it and enlarge it to see the dog sitting there. And she said, it's probably the dog really attached to that household debris. That's the, probably that dog's house. And all the contents of the house is out in this backyard or side yard or whatever. And she went out there, she got the dog, found out the dog was very-
Gravely injured.
What's the word?
Gravely.
Gravely injured. And sadly, she took the dog herself to a facility and had to have the dog euthanized. It was a sad photo of her right next, I don't want to do it to you, but can I? It's her and the dog, like, you know, in the picture, and they both look really sad because it was the dad's last, the dog's last moment. So just thank you for that. That was just an unusual case that I, there is nobody else in the world who could have done that in the most humane way possible.
And there was actually a neighbor that said he had been trying for days to find somebody to pick the dog up, and nobody would. Without hesitation, I knew he wasn't going to, he would have died.
Yeah, the dog would have died there in a day or two. So thank you for that. Ms. Olivia Smith?
I just wanted some clarity on your resolution 135. That was putting three names on the depository. But in your, in your agenda, it talks about, it was for the depository for the U.S. Economic Development Administration recompete grant? It was that? I mean, I didn't see that on your screen when we had it up there versus what I see here. So is it a deposit, is it for two different resolutions? That's number one. And then in the 136, I know where that deposit is, but just what you're talking about. And you were saying $2 million is going to be used to get lighting and so forth. And you also mentioned that, you know, that area is overgrown and bushes and so forth. So as you're doing the lighting and fixing up, are you also going to take care of the overgrown bushes that goes over? I know just what you're talking about, where you go over the train tracks to get to the other side as well, to the Fifth Street side. So is that going to be also taking place as you put lights down there so that we'll have a nicer, excuse me, a nicer look to that playground?
I wouldn't say probably, yes. Our Public Works, there's also a set of lights in that Four Seasons Park. I know, you don't know where Four Seasons is. We call it the Dorian Court Playground or basketball courts. There's an entrance that's on, like, right between the house and the Pico Station that we wanted to add lights as well. It looks like they're going to have to end up being solar-powered lights. We had the electrician look at the lights there because that path is really dark, and then some bad things happened there. When Lenai Electric went out there, they were like, these things must be fake. There is nowhere in sight that electricity shows up at these light poles. So the electric must have been just stripped away many, many years ago. And then they showed, they couldn't even get their bucket truck down the, down that little pathway. But in preparation for fixing those? Did anybody catch that? Can you answer? Thanks.
The U.S. Economic Development Administration is requiring that we open up a separate bank account that will receive these grant funds. This is simply a change from the resolution that we adopted last week, which had five signatories, and we've eliminated two of those signatories. We just keep it to the key signatories on the bank account. So this is just a separate bank account to put those EDA funds in. And for danger, for fear of being the most disappointing person here today, I just got word that we may need to adopt a resolution regarding this EDA grant before the end of the year. So don't take December 26th off your calendar just yet. So. I didn't want to say it, but I got the, I just got the message, so.
All right, let's see if we can get a quorum.
I just walked out the room for one moment, and what happened?
We'll have some conversations soon, see if we can ratify that in the first week of January. But if it, if the funding is at risk, I think if we can get three members of council, we might want to get that together.
All right.
You're lucky I lived on the street.
Okay, we'll talk about that. Ms. Rosetta?
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's not on. That, that's not working.
This is not working? That's all right. That's all right. Good morning, mayor and council and fellow residents. I just want to say to the mayor and council about the wonderful partnership that you were able to do with First and Apostle Holy Church. As the mayor said, as councilwoman, you have to state it, that it was amazing. And I'm just going to give you an example, how those partnerships are so important. There were many families there, and we had, thank God, we had enough toys, but we didn't have that many coats. And what happened, some of the members were able to observe some of their families, where you could tell that you were really in need of a coat. One family, and that Sunday night, it was cold. And the kids didn't have no socks on. And we took the family to the side and we just clothed them. And they were very appreciative that they were, in addition to the toys, they were also able to get the coats. So I just wanted to just share that example because sometimes we may complain about we don't have, and we are blessed, but there are a lot of people out there right there who need and need. But I just stand today just to talk about our blood drive that's going to take place tomorrow in partnership with the Labor Union 413, Seventh Street. It's going to take place from 9:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I just might as well let people know today was the last time. I know the mayor gave blood, Jessica gave blood. The park always helps for better giving blood or having their firefighters provide blood. You can give blood every 56 days. So I just want to just remind people, this is the last one for this year. Second of all, we have our senior holiday party tomorrow. This is the first time we've been able to have a holiday party for the seniors in a couple, a couple of years. They would have parties elsewhere, other places, but they haven't been able to have a party here. So it's going to take place tomorrow, I'm sorry, Friday, from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. in Chester City Community. So I just want to say thank you for providing the funds to allow us to do this for seniors. And God bless you and have a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Thompson.
Hi, council, how y'all doing?
Good.
One of my concerns, I love to talk about, but y'all boarded up. And y'all said, y'all getting vehicles and stuff for the parks and streets?
Are y'all going to get some more leaf floor, leaf machines? Because I only see one out there working for the whole Chester. Another thing, y'all saying that Amtrak is going to put fence up around there. What about the lights underneath the tracks? Are they going to do them too? Because that's a safety too. There's no lights underneath some of them tracks, and it's dark down there when you go there. And what I was concerned about, they send out brochures from my scarves talking about when it was bulk pickup and when recycling. But I put my recycler out on Tuesdays, but it's in front of my yard. And on Mondays, they come, they take the trash in that. So are they still having recyclables or what are they doing? If they see them, they take it? And another thing, bulk pickups is once a week. Okay, they don't pick it up. And somebody have a four, a bedroom set with four things in it, and they don't pick it up the first week, and somebody puts something out the second week. That's two items, right? And sometimes it'd be three and four items out there, and they still won't pick them up. So I'm like, what's going on? We paying for that, right? So how can we avoid that from them taking recyclables on their trash day? My trash day is Monday. I come home Monday night, and they go up and take my recyclables when I usually put it out Tuesday night. So what can we do about that? And the bulk pickups. And another thing is, I live in Buckman Village on Keystone and Meadow Lane. The 11, from the 1000 block to the 1200 block, there's an alley there. I seen y'all out getting stuff that people be dumping all over the place. But y'all never went up there and cleaned that alley. The alley, if something was to happen, the firemen just couldn't get down there because there's so much stuff in there, right? If somebody, cops were chasing somebody, the cops couldn't get down there, they go get away. So I was wondering, when could y'all get up there and clean that alley? Because that's a safety apparatus, too, if there's a fire, the firemen can't get in that alley at all. So that's all I wanted to know, when this stuff is going to happen. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. I doubt very seriously we're buying another leaf vacuum truck. Lights on tracks under the bridges, that is not part of what Amtrak was granted for. It was granted just to put a fence up. But if there's existing lights under bridges that aren't working, let us know about it. I am not sure that every train bridge have lights installed. But for those that do, if the lights are out, let us know. We in the city can take care of that. Just about everything falls under- Just about everything falls under Public Works that, that you're asking about. Recyclables, I, am I wrong, but isn't recycle, recycle day Wednesday only? Yeah. But I, I hear you. They will pick up anything that's out there, whether it's in the blue can, the.
They won't pick up the bulk, but they pick up recycled.
So there's a couple of types of bulk. There's the bulk that the trash man will pick up and then there's bulk that has to be called in to here to be picked up. I get confused at which is which, it's on the website with some, some good signage. Uh, Andrew, Andrew, come on up here while, while I'm fumbling through this. Alley dumping, I know we cleaned out one alley up that way. Is that the one that he's speaking of or is there more? Yeah, I remember, that was crazy. Like the fact that neighbors would even think to put trash in that alley is insane. Yeah, so they'll, they'll, they'll connect. But there was one, it didn't even look like it could be traveled by a car. But from one end of the block to the other, it just looked like neighbors get to their backyards and just throw trash into that. It was five foot high in some sections. The, the front end loader could barely get down there.
We had to use a smaller loader, I believe, to get in there. That was, that was probably the worst case of, of illegal dumping I've seen in the city. That's, that's the worst I've ever seen anywhere. I, they, they actually started at one end of the alley, I, I would assume, and just worked their way out. So they just continued to dump an entire, it would, it would have been impassable by a vehicle. You could barely walk through it. There were nails, it was all construction debris, I think. Um, and I will say, and if you live in that neighborhood, sir, I went door to door personally and knocked doors trying to get information. There are, there is someone with a camera by the entranceway to that alleyway and unfortunately they never responded. So, um, you know, we want to catch who's doing that. That, that, that was an insane situation. Uh, with regard to the bulk trash collection, bulk is one item per week. So if multiple items are put out, sometimes there's confusion. But if you feel that they didn't pick up a bulk item, um, I've got, we've got Melba here, uh, who's our recycling coordinator, but she handles complaints like that. I'll, uh, speak to you after this meeting and, and make sure that that gets rectified. Uh, with regard to the leaf machine, we actually have two leaf machines.
Correct, Sean?
They're both similar in style and age, so they could easily be misidentified as being the same, same. But we actually do have two leaf machines. It would be a good investment at some point in the future to get a more advanced leaf machine. Uh, that could decrease man hours, but I don't think we're there yet. And the vehicles I think we have for now are sufficient. Personally, with regard to the Amtrak lights, I don't believe we have lights on any of our underpasses. I believe we have 25 underpasses. But coincidentally, uh, Amtrak is doing underpass inspections right now. Uh, they're actually out today in the city and they're checking all of their underpasses. They're about halfway through the city. I will talk to them to reconfirm that. They're looking for structural issues and I don't believe they've found one. And that I think addresses everything.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Mr. Kotman. I'm looking all over for you sitting over there in the dugout.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
Um, Happy New Year if I don't see y'all. The reason I came today was for Ms. Dunbar. She threw on the city's program that helps, um, homeowners, the homeowners get a $10,000, um, grant. We're, as contractors, are stuck in a hard place. We're dealing with the third party right now. As Ms. Dunbar said, I can't, it's about to be the holidays, I can't close her ceiling up. Because we wait for the third party to call me to close the ceiling up, to do inspection of the plumbing, that she had just got the whole house replumped. I can't close the ceiling up. That's bad on for the holidays for her and her family to even try to have a meal in her house because I can't even close the ceiling up. And it's over top, it's the ceiling in the dining room, but it's the bathroom ceiling. So all everything is coming down. To me, it's.
Before you go further, this, the work that was been, the work, slow down. The work that has been done is part of the rehab program?
Yes.
Okay. So you've done the plumbing or the plumbing's been done?
I've, I've done the plumbing.
It needs to be inspected?
Need to get inspected.
Before you can put the ceiling?
Yes. So I can't close the ceiling off until we get the final inspection from the third party. I already had a feeling this was going to happen at the last couple of million, I mean, two million ago, about when I, when y'all said the third party inspectors. I put the paperwork in on Tuesday.
I'm sorry, the third party inspectors are this, out of the cities, the city inspectors?
The city inspectors cannot do it. So we had to get the, so the city have a third party inspectors that only could, that does their certain things for the city. The plumbing, the electric and the HVAC.
So that's the group we're talking about?
Yes. Well, I haven't heard back from, not all. So I had to call, um, Ms. West yesterday and ask her, look, can you please, please, please reach out to someone so we get an inspection done at Ms. Dunbar's house?
All right, gotcha. Ms. Nikki, are, are you familiar with any of this?
Yes, Nikki, hi, hi.
Come on up, come on up, please.
Good morning, members of council. Yes, I am familiar with this particular issue. Mr. Moore, um, sent me, forwarded me the email from Councilwoman West letting me know that an inspection was needed. And I shared that we got the notification from SEDA, uh, last Friday that an inspection was needed at the property, followed up with the third party asked them to prioritize this. They, I, I believe they reached out, the third party reached out yesterday, but didn't get a call back. So I texted them, um, during your testimony and asked them to prioritize this today. And so they said they would. Well, they, they get the contact information for the owner and the contractor, so.
I never put her number on there, so everything's all for my, my information.
Well, SEDA gives me the number.
Okay. Okay. All right. So that's that part. But I have a question. Moving forward, because we are doing, like I said, the grant, the grant, how can we be prioritized faster? Is there any way we could make this thing faster? Only reason I'm saying this is because once we open things up, we had to close these things down real fast because we, we're trying to get on a, on a regular basis. We don't want to, these seniors or anyone else to have their home wide open when we doing these things. How can we put things in place, um, to have things done faster than the regular things that's getting done in the city? Also, we have, hopefully this year, well, next year, that we, we have non-inspectors, regular inspectors. Or the city going to hire or get them, the non-inspectors y'all do have, because for years we only had one or two inspectors to go out through the whole city. Or y'all want to try to get them trained, the non-inspectors trained for next year to do certain more things? Or are y'all going to bring more people in to do these things? Because to me, it, it's not making no sense that we doing a third party. It's going to make town, take, make things longer to get, because this is a city, it's not a borough. A borough, it would be something totally different.
I got you.
But we're talking about a city. All right?
So, to, to your point, I think it's really valid that the work that's being done with the, uh, re, rehab grants should be flagged in a certain way to have some type of priority. I don't think they are right now, they just, you're saying they are?
Yes.
Okay, so they are. So we just have to make sure that works out better. As far as the staff that we have that are, uh, on, on board, I guess they're called nuisance inspectors or as we were calling them code enforcement just the other day. Yes, uh, there is significant monies in the 2025 budget, how you like that, Mr. Troutman? The 2025 budget to train, uh, these individuals to take this test and pass it. Many, many of them, if not all, have taken the test in the past and, and haven't had success in passing. It's, it's, uh, they gotta pass the test. So the, uh, the contractor that we brought in to do these inspections was our way of trying to get these permits reviewed and done much more expediently, knowing that we just don't have the numbers of people, as you know, that we should have out here on the streets. We, we just can't tolerate having a bench of individuals who are here, not, you know, who are here doing a great job. They know the city, you know, many of them are residents of the city. We want to keep them on board, but they gotta pass this test. We gotta have you guys, and I'm, I'm just saying that hoping, hoping, hoping they're listening. We gotta have you guys as certified inspectors for situations like this. It just is a matter of, you know, the city in the past not having a need for so many inspectors, but as the city just deteriorates around us, as developers are coming into town renovating so many buildings and even with our own rehabilitation program and, and new businesses coming in. The number of requests for our services has just steadily increased and we haven't done the job that we needed to have a workforce that can, um, can accommodate that, can facilitate that. So yes, uh, I think up to $14,000 in, in training, is that the number that we kind of put out there to? There's significant monies out there to train the individuals that we have on staff to get them certified. And if they don't pass the muster, yeah, we're going to have to hire some certified inspectors coming in the door because the, the process of hiring and hoping that they get their certification up to this point hasn't been successful. So I guess I'm, I'm sounding a little tough right here because I am. We, we can't have the situation continue. My goal out here is to roll out red carpets and eliminate red tape. And when it takes this long to get simple things done, that's, that's red tape that's totally unnecessary. So give us a year to get that done. Hopefully everybody will get all trained up, pass those tests and we can keep our employees in place because they are of value to us, they are city employees, they know the systems. They just don't have that paperwork to go out and do the jobs that we need them to do. I can't make it any plainer. And the final one is Ms. McDaniel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My problem is parking. If a business in a residential area, shouldn't a business owner have off-street parking for their customers? My issue is to have a handicap parking, uh, spot, customer after customer parks. When I leave and I come back, I have no parking. Just last week, I thought city council meeting was in the morning, but it was in the evening. When I got back home, it was a customer parked. And I went up into the next block and parked, but I sat in my car for about 15 minutes. So I end up just driving around because my adrenaline started. Up to, I'm trying to think, um, okay, and like the customer's just coming. They come and they go, they're coming before, last year when I had called the police officer, I was down on the corner park when the police officer came and we was talking. One customer had came out, got in the car, pulled up. Before I can pull up into the parking spot, another customer had came and pulled in. And I was telling the officer, see, this is the problem I'm having. I also called Harrisburg last year and has, and was explaining to about the business next door to me and customers parking in the handicap. They were saying that it's a city ordinance. In order for that, the city has to enforce it. So I don't know where I'm at with this year with y'all. And last year, last year, the mayor was saying that if she has a business, she should have parking for her customers. One of, somebody was supposed to been going to talk to her with a police officer about the customers parking in the handicap spot. But that fell on deaf ears because the police officer that they had to go with them was a friend of hers. I said, this is part of the problem of the city, this buddy-buddy system. If you're not a part of the clique, then some things don't get done. That's my problem.
Okay. Make sure you're finished. So it's absolutely illegal for anyone to park in a handicap spot that doesn't have handicap credentials. That's pretty cut and dry.
They could park.
I did not say that. I said if someone else had handicap credentials, they can park in a handicap zone for, I think, up to two hours, four hours? I know it's, it's for a period of time, I'm not sure what that, two hours? An hour? Okay, see, we got the citizens maybe even knowing. Should all businesses have designated parking? I'm going to turn that into a question. If every corner store in the city had designated parking for the customers that would come to the corner store, would there be any parking left for residents? You know, the answer is, is pretty much no. You would hope that citizens are courteous enough not to park in a handicap zone. If you call the police, they should be ticketed or a parking management company. Uh, I have towed cars that have been in, I've had, I've made the call to the police department to tow cars that have been in handicap spots. It, it's, it's just uncourteous people. I mean, the only thing you can do is continue to call when those incidents happen. I'm sorry, that's, that's the only remedy to that. I will say zoning and, and, and planning, when there, when a new business does come to town, let's say a restaurant wants to open up on Third Street, you know, near Highland. It might be an empty storefront, they want to have a sit-down restaurant that could accommodate, I don't know, let's say eight people. I would, I would think that on the books it would say, well, if you're going to have a restaurant in the middle of that block, you're going to have to have, uh, so much parking. And then that restaurant owner will say something like, well, ain't nobody down here anyway. Uh, why can't people just park on the street? There's no, there's no homes down here, there's no residents. But that doesn't matter. If it's on the books that a certain business has to be designated with, with certain parking, then they are required to have parking. I don't know what business is next to you, whether it's a hairdresser or a corner store, an accountant.
It's an accountant.
Look at, look at me, it's a tax office. So, yeah.
It's right over by Ninth and Booth, there, let me speak with this.
Okay.
I've personally been down there where the business is located, the business is located in a row home. It's close to Ninth and Booth. I've taken pictures, uh, the tight street, you know, both sides where the vehicles parked. I do take, uh, her complaint serious. I did pace it, pass it along to the major, the patrol division. I will follow with that conversation. Again, though, it's a public street, you are allowed to park there. But parking in that area is extremely tight. And to also to that, it's also courtesy to her neighbor that should leave the, uh, parking spot open.
It's a handicap parking spot.
I, I get that, but also.
No, I'm asking.
Yeah, there, there is a handicap parking, but again, is, if someone does not have a handicap plaque or the police should be called. It comes down to the officer discretion. The officer chooses to, they can tow the car.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes just a sign that says, you know, no parking for accountant A, A B C will alert a person not to park in the spot.
And also that I've researched, also the handicap, uh, uh, sign out front said resident parking only on it. I think that gives you a lot more lead way for people not to park there.
Yeah, you, you, you represent so many others in the city who go through the same circumstance. It is illegal to park in a handicap parking spot when you aren't handicapped. Council, is there anything else we want to share with the public here? Or did we get it all that early?
I would just say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Hopefully time don't make us come in. And then, yeah, happy holidays.
Well, I want to thank everybody here. Those of you who are joining us as, as citizens, members of, uh, the public, to our staff here, police officers, my assistant, you're the best. Mr. Schuster, you've done a great job this year. Thank you so much for, for your services. Officer, I feel safe whenever you're at the door. Our clerks are amazing. Our clerks are amazing. City council, we're all newbies up here except for Sister West, who's been around a while. She had a family emergency today and couldn't join us. A lot of us are new, like I call us the class of 2024, those of us on council, as mayor, as directors, whether you're interim or whether you've been here since the beginning of the year, just elected, you've done an amazing job. My priority for 2024 for the city was to fix City Hall, literally and figuratively, literally by just fixing things that are broken, whether it's lighting, air conditioners, switch gear, there's a lot of things you guys don't know, that when you have years and years of deferred maintenance, thanks to ARPA, a lot of dollars have been spent on city properties around here and a lot of money has been spent right in this building. As you can see with the monitors and the AV system, this room is a testament to some of those improvements. The other improvements has just been in staff. We've hired a lot of great people. Some of them worked out, some of them didn't, but we're well on our way to having a staff of people outside of elected officials, because we're going to come and go depending on how you vote us in or out. But city operations never stops and we really need to have a core group of people who know what they're doing, have some policies and procedures to serve you guys year after year after year and ultimately guide us into how we do, what we do. That's about all I have to say. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Maybe you won't see us again, but Tom, make it happen. But that grant is very important. Y'all moving before I hit the gavel. I should get everybody into marriage. Meeting adjourned.
Happy holidays, everyone.
That was a long meeting.
It's all your fault.
Got to get some lunch.
Hey, how are you?
I need, I need...
Hey.
Candace.